Mr. Balton.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mr. Vashada.
Here.
Mr. Rozinsky.
Here.
Mr. Syak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Rukulia.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
And Mr. McEnroe.
I am present.
This evening in executive session, under negotiation, there will be hearing on Sable Education Association grievance 42A, discussion on Sable Principles Association contract for 2014 through 17. There was no discussion on student discipline here reports, 2013, 14, 11 through 12, no discussion on personnel.
Thank you. There's no presentations this evening, Dr. Fani? Everybody who received a copy of the minutes of the regular executive session of Amendment 19, 2013, any questions, comments, additions, deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a vote to accept in five minutes. Need a second. Second, need a roll call vote.
Mr. Spack. Mrs. Balton.
Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mr. Vashada.
Yes.
Mr. Rozinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Rukulia.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
And Mr. McEnroe.
Yes, our student council representative, Ms. Samika Badi.
Hi. Okay, so, okay, so, so far in our school, we applied to the high school, the honors high school program, and we were in the high school program for a couple of years consecutively, but we weren't in it last year, but we reapply to it this year, so hopefully we'll be able to count the consecutive years prior to last year. And we also started the Renaissance program where students with AB on their report cards will get rewarded with prizes and different kinds of, like, activities and stuff, and the thing is, is that your As and Bs cannot be weighted, so it has to be if you have an AP class and you have a C, it doesn't count as an A, it still counts as a C. So, that is what we are doing in school.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. Chakalai, Mr. Syak.
Kudos to the Samso upper elementary school teacher Adele Goldenberg for winning a grant worth $355 sponsored by Rider University. The grant is for advancing Holocaust genocide education and reducing hatred and bigotry in today's society. Ms. Goldenberg had a write-up proposal describing how she will include these topics in her classroom and how the grant will assist her in achieving her goals. Congratulations on a job well done. Congratulations, the Samso upper elementary school has been selected as one of 10 finalist schools to participate in the New Jersey Department of Agriculture's Jets Play 60 Eat Right Move More Program for the 2013-14 school year. As a result of this selection, the school will be eligible to be one of our, one of four first-place schools selected for a visit by a New York Jets football player and receive a monetary award. The school will be required to participate in the Jets Play 60 Challenge. The Jets Play 60 Challenge requires that at least 100 students commit to log 60 minutes of physical activity every day for four weeks. The partnership of the New York Jets and the New Jersey Department of Agriculture sponsors the Jets Play 60 Eat Right Move More Program to recognize schools that support and promote healthier food options, increased opportunities for physical activity, and efforts to promote overall student wellness. Thank you for helping to improve the health of New Jersey schoolchildren, and also thank you to Mr. Jenkins, our Who Services provider, for working on this program as well and helping with the grant.
Thank you. Mrs. Chakalai. Thank you. Dr. Fani, report, please.
Thank you, Mr. McEnroe. A, there was no report, B, there's an approval of a donation, and the, also approval of 48-month lease for the Savin copiers that we presently use. Number three is our print management company that we pay for all our ink and things of that nature for our copy machines and our computers and printers. There's also two new part-time hired professionals out of need for special education program, our kindergarten program. There's also a approval of a contract to start doing, surveying the $28,000 for the Truman School classrooms that we discussed last week. Hopefully, we can get that program off the ground. There's also the approval of No Child Left Behind, our entitled to grants which amount to about $751,000. Any question with that section?
For the Truman, Truman School regulations, what are we looking at?
Currently, you have clusters of classrooms. What we're looking to do is put up permanent walls and then also make a classroom within the media center so that you obtain another classroom. This is only approving the work from the architect to do the drawings and things of that nature to start preparing to go out to bid, but since this was not a project that was approved in the budget, we would have to transfer money from capital project once it gets here, but I think it's important, we have to do the preliminary work and then we can move ahead with it. And if we're looking to do it for this summer, waiting for the budget cycle doesn't give us enough time.
You had sent the email about, from a financial perspective, that you were going to take this money out of the capital budget, but it wasn't, we never discussed in it, budget. But that capital reserve, when we discussed it, we had allotted that we were going to use that money for most, a lot of it for security. So, my question is, what, do you have a whole package of what the money is going to be used for? These classrooms were never discussed, why wasn't this brought up when we did the budget?
And this wasn't part of the budget process last year. These are the things that came up. Basically, a safety concern that apparent raised as far as evacuation drills and some of the emergency evacuations we were doing. Dr. Altman has been talking with the administrators of that building.
Right, I understand that, and I agree that there's problems with Truman.
But it wasn't part of the budget process, it wasn't a priority.
But the money that we had put aside for capital projects, we had discussed here, that that money, we had other security things that we were supposed to do. Does doing this is going to take money away from all the other security?
That's what I'm saying. The current, we would take money from the current capital reserve that's going to be there at the end of this audit, which I believe is going to be close to $3 million because we had excess money in the capital, a different fund that closed out. So, there's money available above and beyond what you took out for this budget, and once we start the budget cycle, we'll have to make sure that if this becomes a project the board wishes to go out and bid for, we then have to allocate money in different areas, but it would not affect this year's budget.
Right, but what was the dollar amount we put away for capital reserve last year? It was at least a million, right?
No, no, 750s in the budget. I believe we put to the side.
This money you're talking about is supposed to go from the capital reserve?
Yes, I believe we put 1.2 or 1.4.
I know it was over a million.
It was in June, I, it's around that number, and then I have money that's excess funds in Fund 30 that got closed out per the audit, which I believe brings it up to about $2.7 million.
Right, but so, you're saying in Fund 30, you have another $1.5 million?
I believe that that's the closeout.
Okay, and what was closed out that's leaving us this 1.5?
That was all of, I, the best way I can explain it, we, we applied for all our school development authority funds, but at that round that went in for the school development authority, those were projects that the board fully funded already. We got the 40 percent grant, but you don't know the dollar amount until you close out the project. So, now that all school development authority projects are closed out, there was, the money that we budgeted now has to come back into your operating budget and sit as a capital reserve now for future capital projects, because they gave you back money that you originally budgeted for.
Okay, so the 1.5, that would be June money? That would come back in June, is what you're saying?
It already came back, I closed out.
So, we could have that now?
Yeah.
And you could spend it now?
Yeah.
And that's available? Okay. I have some question for the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
When you guys had met, I remember seeing something way back when for the 1.2 million, what was allocated in there, what we were going to spend it on? So, have that 1.2, is that going to cover all of the swipe cards?
Yes.
The cameras, all the other stuff that we wanted to do?
All the money that were appropriated in the budget are included with all of the, all of the programs or projects that we agreed to are encompassed and included within that amount of money. Now...
But we've not yet even voted on that.
But I think those, you're confusing two different pots.
No, I'm not confusing, I understand they're two different pots of money.
The security is still out there, we're waiting on, we filed for those broad grants also, so we have that in.
Right, my concern, I'm not confusing the 2,000 money, my concern, you know, how much are you estimating this project to be?
The architect estimated around $300,000.
Okay, so, my concern is, was the 1.2 million enough to cover the security measures that we wanted to do, that we had discussed last year?
If you're only talking security?
No.
Yes.
Well, it wasn't the roof and everything?
Security and roofs, no, and there were other projects, but again, there are other money sitting in capital projects based on the closeout that you would have to do, and that's, and the D is, this is not authorizing the board to spend money on construction tonight.
Right, but we're authorizing $28,000, so if we don't want to do this project, then we're just throwing $28,000 away.
Yeah.
And so, what I want to have a feel for is the whole pot of the 2.7 million and not piecemeal, throwing the ones, knowing that I'm not going to sacrifice another project.
Your question is, do we have more than $2.7 million in projects in the district to do? Yes, we do.
I know that.
But they're not appropriated.
Which ones you wish to do?
But I'm talking about projects that we've already looked at and leaned upon, pretty much like security, we've discussed, we might not have formally voted on it, but we have discussed those already.
The two that, the two that I know that were on the plate more than anything, you've been there, are the Truman, Truman School roof.
Correct.
Which is around 1.2 to 1.3.
1.2.
And I believe the security, depending on what level of security we do, can range anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000 dollars.
Correct, and don't forget the bathrooms in the middle school that we're doing at House.
But that's in this year's budget, we're already going, that's not sitting in the capital.
But Truman is also in this year's budget that we've done, because that Truman roof starts in June, that was, we appropriated that roof in this year's budget.
No, we don't have roof.
Oh, yes, we do.
We have the all-in-school ventilators, all-in-school ventilators.
Correct.
Which we're doing.
Yeah, but wait, just, I don't want to confuse the budget money with capital reserve money, I'm only interested in the capital reserve money.
Correct, I understand what you're saying.
So, that Truman roof was supposed to be in the capital reserve money, correct?
That Truman roof was supposed to be in a project for 2014, June of 2014.
14, 15, we're going to try and put it into the 14, 15 budget to do it following year, because we only have $750,000 in the capital budget this year.
Right, that, but, not the budget.
Right.
I thought we were going to do the roof in the capital reserve and the security. I thought the capital reserve was...
That was our idea.
Is that Truman School roof?
We're going to do the roof, excuse me, we're going to do the roof, we're going to do the bathrooms, we're going to do security, those are the issues.
Right, but the bathrooms were in the budget.
The bathrooms came back into the budget.
The bathrooms are in the budget, not in the capital reserve.
So, is security and the roofs, which came out to about 1.6 million?
Mr. President, can I make a suggestion? It's only two weeks till our next meeting, can we maybe have the administration prepare for us an exact summary on one page of what the capital fund was, capital reserve was allocated for, and what specifically is in the budget and how this fits in, and then we can reconsider.
Budgets, budgets are already, oh, I know what's in the budget. How long have we been talking about doing this Truman affair to the open space?
I've, a couple of years now, really.
Yeah, at least since I've been here.
About 15 years.
This has, this project has never come to the budget meeting.
Not through the budget.
It's never come to the budget.
But we talked about putting it in.
Right, I mean, this is something that probably should have been done in the 70s.
And also the Buildings and Grounds Committee has a discussion.
My only concern is I don't want to sacrifice the security that we already allocated money on a project that we never discussed, and I don't want to lose the money for the other security measures. And we're just, you're piecemealing me now by projects.
Yeah, if I would have known it, I would have had that with me, I didn't know that there was a concern. We sent it out, no one actually replied, so I didn't have it. I do know the two pieces that were discussed for the capital reserve are the Truman roof, which is around 1.2, and security measures, which are around 300,000 to 500,000 dollars.
And the 1.5 million is a given, it's not a, it's...
Phil, I work with numbers all day, so, again...
Well, put it, put it on the sheet, like, Mrs. Syak, write an email to us.
We'll withdraw it at this point, done, and then it's all, and then...
And we can bring it back for a second.
I'll bring it back.
I did have one other question on that section, the print management, is that bid or is that an RFP?
We did that two years ago, I did it two years ago when I was RFP, the contract, the language, the way it read was allow us to renew for another two-year period. This will be no more than three years, because it was one and a half and another one and a half.
How much do we pay them a year?
I believe last year we came in around $25,000.
Sorry, we're...
It's been a good process on black and whites, black and white copies, we're probably saving around five cents a copy. On colored copies that we do, we're probably around three cents a copy. They maintain them, they come in, they send in the stocks, so it's never an issue how much needs to be renewed, it's there. They replace the printer if it does break down, so it's been a good process for us.
Is this copiers or printers?
Printers.
This is only printer, okay.
Only printers.
All right.
I have our printers.
I was looking at that price and it seemed high, but now you tell me it's printers, that makes sense, okay.
Yeah. It's our actual printers.
Copiers alone, okay.
Section C. We have a resignation, a lot of all transfer of custodians, some retroactive pay increases for non-union people, and a few professional days. Any questions with section C?
Mr. DeAndrea, on number three, I'll be voting no, to these pay increases, not everyone is entitled to a raise every year. A lot of people out there haven't gotten raises for five years, I think the money can be spent elsewhere.
I also have a concern with number three. This is our first lame-dug session we've ever had on this board. I don't think the pay raises is a good idea to do at this time, I think we should wait for a new board, so I'm going to make a motion to table it until January's meeting. So, it would be number three on page four and number six on page five.
Do we have a motion at the table? I need a second or a motion down.
Just a second.
Okay. I got a motion and a second, and we will call both to table. Item C3, am I correct?
And D6.
Motion is to table C3.
No, I did, I said, I'm going to vote D. Can I motion this together or I have to make two?
See, well, you want to make a motion for both, you can.
I can.
C3 and D6?
Yes.
And the motion is to table. Mr. Balton.
Yes, but abstain, I'm waiting to ask.
Well, this is a motion to table, so you can't abstain there. Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mr. Vashada.
No.
Mr. Rozinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
No.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Rukulia.
No.
Mrs. Trapp.
I'll say no.
Mr. McEnroe.
No.
Motion, the motion does not pass to table.
Just a comment, the reason I voted no is because these salaries are actually effective July 1, 2013, so I don't want to delay them further again until next year. If they were 2014, then I would say yes, the addition to table would help with the important...
Right, and I agree with that, and if that's the case, we should have voted on it hard, if you felt that way.
June.
I think the board had something to do with that. Press on.
Ryan.
Okay. Moving to D, personnel certified, there's a rescind of an appointment of a speech person, a resignation of a psychologist and a biology teacher at the high school, there's a granting of pregnancy leave, an amendment of the employment of the nurse coverage during the makeover club and sweet treats after school activity. Number six is a retroactive increase for those individuals as noted, professional days as noted, approval of employment of the following individuals at number eight. Number nine is an approval of a JV wrestling coach, and ten are volunteer coaches as noted, and 11 is a list of our substitute people. Any questions with section D?
Dr. Altman, number one, I think, is that another speech specialist or the one we talked about last meeting?
That's the same one.
I believe that's the same one. It is the same one.
DeAndrea, number six, I'll be voting no on.
Mrs. DePinto, does that answer your question?
Why is that brought up again? I, we...
I think that brought up, okay.
I don't believe we voted on the question. E, policy, this is to move the budget cycle, it's a resolution, the Jersey School Board's, what's your, ASBO, I'm not sure which one.
ASBO.
ASBO, to move the budget cycle further back since the election has been moved from April to November. Any questions with this resolution? With none, moving to F, these are our two harassment intimidation bullying findings, which is reports 11 and 12. Special services, these are our regular resolutions, any questions with that section? With none, moving to G, it's a formation of robotics club at the high school, approval of the all-acquification day, another approval of the high school information meeting, which is EF tours, I believe that's European trips. Number four, the middle school activities as noted, Truman School PTO Valentine's Day dance is number five, Samso upper elementary school's winter concert and spring concert is six and seven, creation of computer club at the high school, and the middle school's music department field trip to Sugar Theater in New York to see the following. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to H, waiver of transportation is noted in number one, the use of the board buses on Sunday to transport the SCA to the December 8 parade, following trips is noted in A, B, and C, cheerleading squad competitions is noted. Mr. McEnroe, that concludes my report. And by the way, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I forgot.
There's no more board discussion on the agenda, I'd like to open it for the public for any questions or comments on the agenda. If you have any questions or comments on the agenda, please come up, state your name and address with the record.
Barbara Hill Cummins, Barbara Hill Cummins, 22nd history. Whatever.
We hear, we hear you.
First item on the agenda. The Arlen Elementary PTO has to pay for improvements for safety. I thought PTO raised money for students, whatever, and this, I believe, shouldn't come out of the budget and a fence placed there, not the PTO.
What's the background on it? Are you still...
I mean, it's wonderful that they raised the money, but I think this is completely out of line. It should be going for students and all, not for a safety feature of a fence.
The only thing I know about it is after they put up the playground, they were concerned about fencing it in. I believe another PTO did the same thing, so they followed suit, and that's the only thing I know, I'm not on that PTO.
The playground that was put in years ago?
The playground that, that PTO installed, donated.
Donated, and placed in there, it's really nice, but this is safety.
It was all the, the prior principal of that building, could you give us a background on Johnson's Lane?
Certainly, there was a very generous donation from the Arlen PTO years ago in terms of when the original playground was installed to block the exit of children going to Washington Road. And having used the playground for never years and with the additional special needs children, that we felt as though that adding an additional fence along the back parking lot of Johnson's Lane would prevent children from being able to have easy access to Johnson's Lane, and that's the reason for this, again, donation from the PTO.
Okay, then why was that never requested as, as a budget item or something?
Actually, the need became greater last spring, so at one point we even had a foldable orange fence there.
The orange fence.
Because of the fact that, it's one of those things with special needs children, they suddenly discovered they could do that, where before they didn't realize they had that access, and as a result of that, it was after the budget cycle. And again, because the tradition of Arlen PTO being very generous, that they just decided, they felt as though that it would be an immediate impact, and they decided that they wanted to donate the fence.
Which had been done in the past also, from other elementary schools?
Truman.
Even in Arlen.
No, I don't...
Another, another PTO, I think, too.
So, they just followed suit.
I mean, I think it's wonderful that the PTO raises money, but I think it should be going basically for other things, should be without having to place a safety item, which I think the, your budget should absorb, but after listening to all this budget transfers and money...
I agree, I mean, there's no, I don't think we disagree with that.
Okay.
No, that's a drop in the bucket for us, but that's a lot of money for them.
Right, and I'm, and not, this was discussed at the, I discussed with the Eisenhower Principal, too, they have a similar issue, and that's going to be a budget request, right, the Eisenhower, so...
I can tell you it's in the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Because I did tell him to call, because I...
He put it in the budget.
The other item is the salaries and the increases. I totally agree with Mr. Vashada. In economic times, a lot of people have been foregoing raises. I know one of my son's heads, and he's an executive, and he took a flat salary for a couple of years, and now I look at some of the salaries that some of these people that are totally no certification at all, and the salaries are unreal. I mean, the supervisor for custodian, $71,000 for a second shift supervisor, with no certification. You have Karen Ornich, which I broke up, brought up many years ago, no certification. Secretaries partially, I think they're in line, but the rest, and the assistant superintendent salary, apparently, wasn't there a $5,000 increase about six, eight months ago? There wasn't?
Had to be voted on.
Well, because I thought, or last year, part of it, and it was brought, well, I
just think they're out of line, and I like to defend my tax dollars for the seniors and even for the young people that can afford it, because our taxes are getting out of line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fani. Anyone else on the agenda items? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the agendas, and then may I vote to file and accept the superintendent's report?
Several, two.
Need a second.
Mr. Balton.
Item C, number three, abstain, I'm waiting to ask. Yes on secretaries, no on all others.
Stay with me as I abstain on that.
Yes on the confidential secretaries, no on all of the others.
I'm sorry, yes on the confidential. And no on all others. Yes on everything.
D6, no all. Yes on all.
Mrs. Backo.
Number, page four, number three, yes on the secretaries, no on the others.
But no on all the rest. Mr. Vashada.
Yes, with the two exceptions that I mentioned.
And just a clarification, C3 and D6.
Correct.
Okay. Yes to everything else. Mr. Rozinsky.
C3 and D6, be no.
C3 and D6 be no.
So all, all of them are no?
That's right. Yes.
Well, all is no to all.
Right. So what is no to all, and Tom was no to all?
Tom was no to all, Paul was no to all. Phyllis and Dan agreed to the confidential secretaries, no to others except Dan vote abstaining only.
Thank you.
Should we get this? I'm voting yes, and just a comment, six is just the reemployment. There's no salary increase, which means if the board that ultimately denies this, we end up with a lawsuit on our hands.
No, no.
No, it's increased.
This is salary increase.
This isn't increase.
Yeah.
So there wasn't an increase the last time?
No.
So your vote, so no votes are simply on the increase, not on the people?
Right.
That's an important clarification. Thank you. Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakulia?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes, and I want to also add that, as much as it's important to have the, it's important to have the whole staff have high morale. And by pulling some of these people out for the job well done, I think that that hurts morale. So yes on everything there.
Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Delegate to New Jersey School Board Association. Since this is the month, this is December, I assume there's nothing to brief.
Actually, my report is already brief. I mentioned at the last meeting that I had a new vision for public education. It was adopted by national school boards, and I have your pocket guide to that vision. That concludes my report.
It's like a pocket guide.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's a check, it's a gold. It's a Christmas gift. Okay, any committees meet that I'm unaware?
Just actually one. I represented the board at the technology committee meeting today. We discussed our park readiness, the phone books that are coming in. We actually got a breakdown of how many are going to each individual school. We discussed the network upgrades, which are continuing to occur in terms of increased bandwidth and a larger firewall, all in preparation for the park exam. We also learned that there is a, several teachers in the science department and also in the math department who are actually flipping instruction, and they're actually having their students do the bulk of their quote-unquote "learning" or research about the lesson or introduction to the lesson at home. And then when they come in, they actually work with them on actually solving problems and, you know, doing actual, the stuff that typically would be done as homework in the classroom. And when you think about it, it kind of makes sense, because a lot of times when students go home, where they have the great difficulty is actually working through the problems. And a lot of times, they won't have someone in the home who can help them. Having the teacher there with them gives them the opportunity to ask questions and to, you know, develop those concepts further with a certified instructor. And I actually suggested to Mrs. Zeichner that once that gets further down the line in either May or June, we might want to look at having a presentation by those teachers on exactly what that flipped instruction looks like.
Okay. Under discussion, I have a question for the administration. I noticed, Dr. Alfano, you send out the enrollment board every month, and I make a copy, put it in the booking. I noticed, and I don't know if the rest of the board is aware of this, since the June of last school year to the, this month, there's been an enrollment increase of 90 students.
The buses stopping here.
In the district, which gives us now a total of 6,034 students. And I didn't even notice from October to November, one month, we had an increase of 23 students. What's driving that? Because I have a trend from the last...
My big piece was a lot of preschool kids that came in, and UES, I believe, had about seven fifth graders.
An increase of 13 students.
And you had, you had some at Truman, I believe. We had five more at Truman, kind of spread out, and one other school, which I can't remember right now, but there was, yeah.
Does there a neighborhood in particular?
Well, you have some at Truman, you have some at...
UES.
UES.
But that could be coming from the same area.
There was another elementary school. It wasn't the high school or the middle school, it was another elementary school.
Well, Truman had an increase of 42, essentially. So what's the major developments that drive Truman's president's power?
I don't know. For whatever reason, it's moving pretty quick.
And our enrollment verification system is up and running, all those types of things. But that's just a different increase that I happen to notice. Okay. Any other discussion?
I have another question.
Uh, Mrs. Backer, then Mr. Bishada.
Dr. Alfano, on your highlights you had for the two meetings in January, why'd you put redistricting in, why'd you put for the consultant? What's going to be, what's going to be the presentation for each of those meetings?
The reorganization, obviously, is the 7th, and the 21st is the re-implication.
Okay, so on the 7th, there's not going to be any discussion? So it's only, so it's January 21st, the consultant's coming in for the presentation?
Yes. Reorganization, reorganization is the 7th.
Okay.
And Gary's coming in, Dr. Bowen's coming in, 21st.
Can we do, apparently, a call for that meeting to tell everyone?
Yes, we plan on doing that.
And I think on the 7th...
And is the presentation going to be first?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a little presentation on the 7th.
We want to make that agenda as wide as possible.
Yes. The 21st is only redistricting. I pulled everything else out.
Mr. Bishada?
For the 21st.
Mr. Bishada?
No, I just want to let, at candidate's side, I mentioned that we'd have the report due in November for the redistricting or whatever, and Dr. Alfano just mentioned it on the 21st of January. The doctor will be here and give his report summation about what way the district should go. So, so parents, pass the word on to one another that it's an important night to see what's going to happen, 21st of January.
We'll post it on the website, inform the schools, and send the parent link out. One thing, you sent an email late this afternoon, and I saw, about a resolution about funding based on enrollment and out of attendance. And you wanted us to...
Not for this.
I know, to discuss that. But what is the gist of that?
The issue is that they're looking to use your funding formula based on your average daily enrollment, which they don't feel is an appropriate way, so that if your average enrollment drops below a certain level, you lose funding versus the current way that they do it, which is not based on your enrollment.
That's not a new proposal. Is it picking up steam in the legislature?
My understanding is yes, because it came through my association.
Okay.
Is there, I guess what they're looking to do more than anything is use the benchmark that your funding is based on how well you, how well kids attend school, which shouldn't be the criteria.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that would be driven by, like, by low-income districts, because they probably have a harder time getting their kids to school.
No, enrollment, enrollment helps them.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's driving it. I just know it came through from my association today. Again, another one of these things that the state is looking to change how they've done things without really reaching out to school boards and finding out, how does it impact you? I mean, just think that if your average enrollment drops below a certain level, you lose school funding. Why should you lose funding? Because you didn't meet the benchmark of 97, and you came in at 96.8. You know, they said it at that. So it shouldn't be based on if they feel your average...
So it's an average daily attendance up to a certain point?
Yes, and if you drop below that, it's...
It's an October 14th, is that the cutoff?
Normally it's, now it's October 15th.
Right. And that's based on, it seems to be fair. Wouldn't that have an impact on us, because our enrollment?
No, but what happens in the future.
Any, any other discussions?
I have actually a question, Mrs. Zeichner. I meant to ask you, and I forgot. We talked about having a meeting next Monday for the parents with the parent portal, or are we going to postpone that?
We haven't had confirmation yet, and the gentleman was going to do it.
Okay.
I can move ahead with that, if you'd like me to.
Well, only if we get the confirmation, maybe that would...
I will pursue that, but is that also a back to swing night? Is that back to everybody having conferences?
Conferences.
Conferences, I think.
Oh, maybe during the day, not at night.
During the day, okay.
Right. Okay, well, we could...
All right. If there's no other discussion, I'd open up the public for any business may come forward to the board. If there's any questions, comments, or about anything related to the school district, please come up and state your name and address with the record. Seeing none, I'll accept the motion for adjournment. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next meeting is Tuesday.